Okay.
Okay, let's get started like what everyone here to the city council meeting tonight. We'll start by I'll give the dedication and then if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, we'll go to that point. Father, as we come together as city council, we give thanks for the opportunity we have to serve this great community and to make decisions that will hopefully benefit and impact this this community for the good for the future. Please bless us to be able to work together, to make decisions that will benefit everyone that will serve this community and serve its residents. Please bless us to be able to communicate and work together in those decisions. Again, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to serve it. Say this name is Christ. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the tear and cry agenda item outgoing city council member recognition. So where do you want to do it in front and get a picture or just do it up here? What do you think?
Just do it right here.
Just do it right here. So part of part of what we have, part of what we have is is a plaque for the outgoing members and we also have a jacket or a coat that will be here in a little bit and we'll be giving that to you. But this this plaque is exceptional service recognition presented to John Blazard in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to Kama City. John has served on the city council from January 2022, January of 2024. So, John, thank you for serving our city. Appreciate it. Okay, this one is for exceptional service recognition presented to Kevin Todd in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to Kama City. Kevin has served on the city council from January of 2004 till January of 2024. That's 20 years of service to the city and that's an amazing accomplishment. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Again, we have another part of that that's coming. So, we'll give that to you then. Thank you, guys. Pretty few will. You will sincerely be missed. Thank you.
Sometimes more than others.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 14th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Comments, questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion. I'll move to approve the minutes from November 14th, 2023.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 28th, 2023 city council work session meeting minutes. Comments, questions, concerns? Nothing, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the November 28th city council work session minutes as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
We need microphones. After having that meeting, we need microphones.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rose?
Sorry, Jessica, I didn't mean to cut you off. We we need to consider as a council and a bit of an upgrade in our technology in as a whole. And we talked a bit about that when it related to how we present these meetings and such, but that would include microphones.
That might.
That's on the council, so we'll, if you want to bring that back up when it comes time for the budget or amendments, then let's do that. So, sorry to cut you off.
No, I just after re going back and hearing it, we needed it.
So you didn't hear it?
Correct.
Next item on the agenda.
You got my drift.
It wasn't a drift, it was a storm, but that's okay. Approval of the December 5th, 2023 city council special meeting minutes. Comments, questions, concerns? I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the December 5th, 2023 minutes as as presented.
I second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the invoice register dated December 11th, 2023. Comments, questions, concerns? On page four, there's a remind me what what's happening with the backhoe upgrade, the century equipment for roughly 20 grand in total. Yeah, so if if you remember, we leased the backhoe and we pay a lease payment every year. This payment is slightly larger than what we normally pay because we had extra hours on the backhoe based on last winter's storms and this spring's water situation. And the fact that they came three months late to trade the backhoe, I did negotiate 125 hours of those extra hours off, but we did we did still have extra hours because of last winter and this spring's water. So that's the reason it's the 20,000. Okay. Thank you. You got anything else on any of the invoice register?
So, go ahead, John.
I had a question. There was a lease to the Forest Service.
Can you just tell me what page it's on? Page six? Annual land use fee?
Yeah. Except for the Elder Hall of Spring?
I don't even have that lease they have to pay every year that they, for a long time they didn't charge us, but they started charging us a few years back. I'm sure that's what it is.
Jessica, did you have a question?
Yeah, so the boom lift, is that for rental?
That's a rental for hanging Christmas lights.
Okay.
We have a boom truck, but it won't extend high enough to get where we need to. And had this conversation with Dave, but last year we thought the thought process is was let's leave the lights up and see if they weather because the cost to pay the employees to take the lights down and put them back up is more than replacing the lights. Well, we took a pretty bad trip because of the winter, so ended up replacing a bunch of lights.
Move on page six, the any hour service?
Page which one?
Page six.
Oh, that's a re is that a reimbursement, Scott?
Yeah, they recharged them a couple thousand dollars for just through the warranty period. And then after two years, I believe, they give them.
If we have, if there's any problems with what they do, then we draw from that to repair it.
Got it.
Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the invoice register dated 1114, 2023 through 1211, 2023 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. That's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the public's opportunity to comment on items not normally on the agenda. So if you have a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and present your comment. If you would mind being considerate to any of the other public that would like to make a comment and keep your comments in a timeframe that allows everyone to participate. So, public comment is open.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Tom Polakalas. I live just around the corner at 65 East 300 North. Very quick, since it's so cold outside, to be thinking about energy and what the city might be able to do at some point in time to take a look to cut its own energy bills. The Inflation Reduction Act provided for direct payment to cities that don't have a federal tax appetite. So for the private sector, you can get a tax credit when you make an investment in LED lighting or solar or other clean energy technologies. That wasn't really fair to those public entities and nonprofits that didn't have a federal tax appetite. So now there's a new provision that can buy down the cost of a project by 30%. So whether it be thinking about lights, heating systems, your next vehicle, considering possibly I know some police departments that have gone with electric vehicles or possibly this is a little bit paranoid perhaps, but something that we need to be thinking about is resiliency so that critical facilities do have power no matter what. There are some critical facilities, cities, police departments, fire departments, others that are putting in backup systems, whether it be lithium ion batteries or some other storage mechanisms so that if the lights go down, whether it be for weather or for incident, I used to work with the general manager of the arcane electric cooperative in Southern Utah. Their substations were actually attacked by maybe just good old boys out and pick up trucks, but it may be something that's worse. So hopefully those are very remote possibilities. I come from the Reno Tahoe area and I do know there have been times when storms at Lake Tahoe, I think last winter, put the grid down for some citizens for three days and thereabouts. So some energy storage may be something just to have on the back of your mind at some point in time when there's an opportunity to look at it. There's also some community facility money available through the USDA World Development and just some really good programs available to rural American communities. That's it. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public comment section. Next item on the agenda was going to be the 2023 fiscal year in the audit report. Kim was working with the auditor feverishly for several days and she received a call last night about 10 to 5 saying they would not be ready. And so they their thought process was that they would have have the audit finished by this morning, but they have an internal review procedure to make sure that it gets to see some extra eyes and didn't feel like that would be done today. So they will meet the requirements for the December 31st deadline and then they will report to us on the January 1st meeting. That agenda item is canceled. We didn't have time to cancel it on the agenda. And the next item on the agenda, the resolution is going to be canceled as well. I will explain that one. So, as I was looking at some of the documentation in Dropbox yesterday, it was pretty vague and not a lot of information there. So I went back through some emails back to October and found some other information. And as I read that information, I didn't like what I read and it was confusing. As it turns out, we are locked into the lease agreement we have right now until July 6th, 2024. This resolution and this item was supposed to update us to their new lease plan. And we were we're going to be credited for the part of the lease we paid towards this new lease plan. But in this new lease plan, it's a multi-year lease plan, not an every-year lease like we thought we were going to do where we would pay yearly amount, get a new vehicle every year. The other part of that that bothered me was that we could buy it out at the end of one, two, or three years, but there's a course of payment you made.
Two points, I won't play.
And at one year, it's 102% of the residual. One year, it's 100, or two years, 101%, three years, 100%. If you go to four or five years, then you have two balloon payments. So under the current plan, if we wanted to buy Trevor's truck this year, July 6th, if we want to buy that truck, it's we paid the 6,000, there's a number right around 63,000 mark to buy it. If we want, if we switch over to this new plan and go the full five years, it's going to cost us 80,000. If it makes sense. So, anyway, I'm going to read the email that this lady sent to me after I spent 30 or 40 minutes on the phone with her. She says, thanks for your call today. As we discussed, city is not prepared to make a decision on the Ram 2500 just yet. Your current lease expires on July 6th, 2024, and you would like to keep the vehicle and you would like to keep the vehicle on this current lease agreement until then. In March, we will have our fleet department reach out to see if you plan on returning buying or swapping the Ram. Hoping once we figure out a plan forward, we can have our team meet with you to address any concerns you have regarding the new multi-year program and how the payment settlement and early buyout provisions work. I know you have had a difficult time reconciling intent of the program versus the lease language as you currently interpret it. I want to make sure we address all of your questions. So, considering my concerns and considering we don't have to do anything because we are good, I decided to cancel this item and make sure we have accurate and good information to base a decision on. If you want any further information, I'll try and explain it better, but it just it just didn't feel like it didn't fit. If that's the terms we have to work on, I'm not sure the city is best served by leasing picket signs. It does, well, here's the other thing that was a bit bothersome. I don't know, she claims when we first did it, we had the same language. It was just a year, a year instead of a multi-year. She also claims that we have a residual to pay it. So, so at the end of that year, they figure that there's a value on that truck. And if they sell that truck for more than that value, we're supposed to see the difference in that. If they sell it for less than that value, we have to pay that. There's not a mileage, but there's it could be a payment. If you think about a public works truck and the potential for what it might do, the opportunity for it to be worth less is probably greater than the opportunity for it to be worth more. And I think the lease works well on the backhoe because of all the parts that get used. But I think on a truck, this council may choose to just go back to purchasing the vehicle under our purchase policy that we adopted because we because we put money aside so that we can do that on those cycles. So I think the council will want to look at that really hard when we get to the timeframe when we have to.
There's just one more millimeter we do. I know it sounds to me like.
It wouldn't be that hard to buy something.
That's, in their mind, we we own the vehicle, but we don't. And the other part of this is is I never saw documentation for this. It was kind of all just handshake. I didn't like that. And and so I felt like that's not being transparent to the public. So, so that's why you're seeing this resolution and everything, because now all of a sudden, if you're going to do all the subdocumentation, they want it all, which is the right way to do it. And until I understand it better, until I can explain it to the council better, until I can explain to the public better, I'm not willing to sign anything at this point. That makes sense. So that item is canceled and we'll readdress that vehicle when it gets closer to the time when we have to make a decision whether to turn it in, pursue a different option, or whether we want to just buy that.
I would recommend when that time does come that we do have our current vehicle purchase agreement available in Dropbox, but I'm sure that it references based on what we did in May 2022. You know, we have a separate, that's.
Yep, we'll have that in there. Okay, so that item is canceled. And next item on the agenda is the consolidated plan. Scott?
All right, so I've gave everybody a copy of this. Some reason the copy I put in Dropbox, it didn't upload it, still isn't there. So here's a copy of it. If you remember, this is something that Mountain Line Association and government asked us to do every year so that they can kind of see what kind of projects we might be going up for grants for. And part of the CDBG, we have to show whatever project you might apply for is our number one project. So you can see we got the sewer improvements, the irrigation system up there. That's kind of what we're thinking is for the CDBG, it's a citywide project, so you don't have to survey. We can use our citywide group status to apply for that and help purchase some of the irrigation equipment that we're looking to do as part of our sewer improvements that will, I think next month, we'll probably bring it onto you and say this is what we're wanting to do and get some of that stuff to the state. And then again, this is just for like CIB and CDBG requires us to have this. So we submit this to Mountain Line so they can kind of see what we're looking to spend on.
Any questions on things that we have on here?
Are these costs brought up to present day estimated?
Present day estimates.
Estimates, yes. Okay. When we back in, we initially brought. Okay.
The Beaver Creek Co., is that the one on Sinner Street?
No, it's up here on. We're extending that.
Scott, number three, the city hall parking improvements, is that is that supposed to represent past spending or going forward?
To finish up the some of the sidewalk and we're working with the Summit County to do some of their sidewalk by theirs. And then we ended up putting some parking out behind the building. We saw a apartment there. It's been very limited with within park foot yards and so.
Is that is that still going to be funded by rap tax grant somewhat? Or are we fully exhausted?
We've exhausted tax that we had three or four years ago. Yeah, we've exhausted the rap tax grant that we have for that. That's just part of that big project.
We just need to ask for more money if it's playground equipment or something like that. Okay. Most of what's left aside from the police parking and maybe a bit of sidewalks should be part of the county's obligation based on when they built the library. So.
Will it be reimbursed by the county for that?
I don't know if we'll get reimbursed if we're working in conjunction with them to meet those requirements. Scott, I wonder if maybe first meeting in January, it might be interesting for the council to see some of the things that we've taken off the list because we've finished those, because we've done a lot in the last couple of years that that I think would be interesting for everyone to see how how much we've actually done off from this list. Would you be able to provide that?
Sure.
That would be great. Just maybe maybe even back two or four years, just just so we so we get a gauge on just really how well we're doing in working on this plan. The Grassy Creek Park, 2024, is that further out or do we?
Whatever you guys want to do with that. Whatever you guys, that's just something, we've thrown that on there. We talked about it earlier.
Just spray the weeds.
If you want to do it next, do it next year, we can do that 2024. It's all up to you guys.
I'm just trying to throw out my thoughts on that. And I hope I don't upset anyone in Grassy Creek. But that that lot is is, in my opinion, pretty valuable for a building lot. And I'm not sure that the value of that wouldn't be better used somewhere where we might protect open space or protect.
A large lot, is it?
Half acre.
Is it one lot?
Half acre.
It's one lot, yeah.
I, you could look on, can you look on Summit County parcel, Scott? It's it's right around, it's right around a half acre, if I remember right.
Point six one.
And it's it's one building lot or two?
One building lot.
It's a park lot.
It's a park lot.
It says park on it.
But as as you're well aware of what it costs to install park equipment, you take the value of that lot and and the cost of the park equipment, and you're talking about a million dollar property, and then we have maintenance and everything involved with that. And maybe the folks in Grassy Creek really want, maybe they ought to have the opportunity to respond. Maybe they'd be happier with someone that had a home there and improved the property. I don't know, but that's a big expense for the city. When may maybe we can do more good with the value of that somewhere else.
You know, as neighbors, it's been thrown out as a dog. Century, so no playground equipment, just fancy food, fences.
No weed and watering.
Maybe.
You did it out there, you put it, you put some bark in on here. We would want the maintenance for us.
I mean, you're going to spend a year with bark, you're not, I mean, it's going to be weed free for a year or two, but then that's that's over, right?
I think the weeds are fine, actually. It's it's the thistles that are next door that are coming up.
So Scott, what's that? Is that a bump truck in Crest and Wildlow, that bike truck? Kind of regotic.
That's too small for that.
I don't know, you could put a little on there now.
It's currently being used that way.
Yeah. Maybe we should meet for Grassy Creek and ask for their.
That's certainly an option, for sure.
Because we were promising their park in their original development, that's what it was supposed to be. So.
It's only 20 years late.
Yeah. So maybe we should.
Well, again, I think they, I think those folks should certainly weigh in, but I don't know.
I know there's a tremendous weed problem down there.
Yeah.
They're migrating last.
Has there ever been any dumping problems on this lot? Anybody aware of that?
I haven't noticed.
For a long time, they dumped some overburdened excavation dirt there when they were going to build the Grassy Creek.
They're killing.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the consolidated plan? Okay. We will move along. Would the consolidated plan include microphones? No, probably not, because that's not something that.
That wouldn't be a capital improvement.
We could easily put it on here, that's for sure. I could say it's it's just kind of a list.
What they're calling the city hall improvements and boost office addition for 100 grand. That's pretty small.
You know, we could maybe add to the city hall windows replaced, but microphones on there and add, I don't know, microphones probably another five, $6,000. Like those kind of stuff's cheap.
So, yeah.
We could easily add that too, if you want.
If that's how low it is.
If we're going to, if we're going to do microphones, then again, I suggest that we look more at an overall technology package and for some of that, just budget for it, right? And we know that we were in the 30 or so thousand dollar range when we discussed that here or so, but so I think you're probably a bit more than.
Five.
Five grand, but it.
We could put that on here too, if you want to.
It's not something that would likely get approved for a CDBG grant, I'm just telling you.
It's on our wish list.
It's just on our wish list. So this capital improvement that we present to mag, it would have, I don't know what value it would have, but yes, we can put it on.
Is the lady that we worked with through TV, is she still around?
So when we talked about this before, I had contacted her. So when we talked about this before, I had contacted her and I think she provided one of the bids or she gave, she gave that information to someone she works with who provided one of the bids.
Okay, so she's still in the business?
Chris, Chris Grant, yes. Yes, I contacted her the last night, we talked about that.
Is this enough for emergency management plan?
Let me give you an update on emergency management plan. So I had a conversation with. No. Larry Peterson. Larry Peterson, the other day, maybe last week. He provided a draft copy of our new emergency management plan. We talked about a few things. And we talked about some changes coming with the council changing and the council assignments that would be related to that plan. And so he's going to make those updates and he will probably plan. We have decided that he would come and present to the council this draft emergency management plan some January or February timeframe. It's a pretty extensive plan. Once we get, once he makes those modifications and presents that to you in a draft form, then you will each have copies to review and make comments on. Then we'll finalize that plan. And at that point, we'll adopt the plan and then adopt him as an emergency contact or resource during certain type. So that's coming. I've just kind of put the brakes a bit on it till we have council members in. And then we can, then we can make assignments for council member A, B, C, and D as it relates to that plan and that new council members get to be updated on that plan.
So our question again is, is 10,000 enough if we're going to hire him?
If you remember, I can't remember the quote he gave us, but I asked him to send me a bill. And so.
That cost you is just to generate the funds. Sounds like she's generating it.
He's generating it and I think he mentioned something in the three to five thousand range. Is that right, Kevin? So, yes, it is, we're good. And I will have something for next year.
Good, all right. Because if we need to purchase any equipment such as generators, should the weeds go down or something like that? That's why I'm bringing this up, that maybe 10,000 isn't enough.
Well, if you want to, if you want to put emergency management equipment on here, that's a different light than the plan.
Correct. Okay.
But I don't know what that would be, but based on what he suggests, then the council will have better information. We had a pretty good conversation, 20 or 30 minutes. He's done an amazing job. It's looking, it's looking really, well, if you're parts, two of them, each part is 30 to 60 or 70 pages.
Well, if we did have an emergency and we implemented him, then we would just pay him an hourly fee is what we kind of come up with, right? So the three to five was just to help us get our plan written. And then if we ever use him, then we just pay him that, right?
That's correct, an hourly wage for consultation.
Yep.
And so it's Larry Peterson?
Jessica, I think so.
Could be Lance.
Lance, maybe.
There you go.
Thank you.
I think it was Lance, because my brother didn't use that, that's how I remember it.
I can tell you what day we sent that to you.
Because I know in April, we talked about that.
I think my heart goes. It might be, yeah. I don't know. It was, we talked, we talked last week, he sent an email out and I had, I took time to review what he had provided, those three documents. It's a total of 150 pages or something like that. And then he and I discussed those documents, came up with some thoughts on that. He will fix those and then he'll make a presentation to the council. Any other questions on the consolidated plan? Okay. We'll move on. Next item on the agenda is appointment of planning commission members. So we have had, based on the elections, we have two planning commission members that were elected to the city council. We have two seats that are empty. After having visited with several people and having multiple discussions, I have decided to present to the council two names. One name being Wes Glazier and one name being Cindy Butterfield. If there aren't any other, if there aren't any major pickups or heartburn with those two names, then I will be making those appointments.
Well.
Good suggestions.
Yeah.
I think they'll both do an amazing job. I met with several people who I think would be good. Talked to multiple people that I think would serve our community, but in the end, those are the two names that I felt would be the right names for now.
So what process did you go to? You said several.
So I.
For future knowledge.
It's, I just followed the appointment process outlined in section 15 of our plan.
Okay.
That's what.
And so what's their background? I mean, I know they've come around town, but I'd love to know more of why you felt these two would be.
Both of these two have spent, have grown up in our city, in our community, have vested interest in our community, have established themselves and have integrated themselves deep into our value system. That's what they seem to be.
So neither of them have knowledge of planning? I'm just like.
So do either of them have a degree in planning?
Nobody does.
Well, there you go.
But so the values, great, are the, again, I was trying to, what's the criteria?
Criteria is that after speaking with them, I felt like they fit what I was looking for.
And how many people would you say did?
Did I talk to?
Talk to and.
Five, five or six.
Okay. I would highly recommend, after being a graduate of Summit County Planning Department's, you know, they're calling it planning lab, I would highly recommend these two new individuals. Go to that plan lab, it lasts about 13 weeks, so it's on a Monday night, it's two hour sessions and you learn quite a bit. And it's all kind of geared towards Summit County. But you do learn a lot about that, so maybe they got to play a lot. I learned a lot. I would, I would, the applications are due, I think there's actually, the early applications are open right now. And then another application for Aiden, they're opening Malters. But Pat Hut, who is retiring, has done a good job of this. And it's basically history and basically how Summit County got developed, warts and all.
Yeah, if they, if they provide a true picture of that so we can see what not to do and some of the things they get, I might be okay with that.
I think, I think that is, if you look. You can go out there, well, I'll just tell you this. You can go out there to the planning and zoning department's website under Summit County. And you can go out and look at the presentations that are out there under YouTube and the agendas and the presentations. But I think a fair amount of cynicism about how the development of Snyderville is racing to the beat. And how everything that's being built has been from development agreements that we made 25 years ago versus what we are giving up here in Eastern Summit County.
I just, as a thought to that, I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of planning for our valley as it is. And I don't know any of the planning commissioners that have been through that. I'm not saying it's not valuable, but valuable. I'm just saying that sometimes, sometimes I think if we can maintain our value system here and not be clouded by someone else's value system.
I don't think value systems can lead to this at all.
I'm just giving you my opinion.
I just want people to be educated as to how did the development code happen? What did happen back in 2017 when Summit County changed all the zoning here in Eastern Summit County? And what kind of repercussions are now in front of us? So it really does have to do with the valley, but I think Canvas and the valley, as we saw in our session that we have about the air ranch is very much an enthrall. You won't be able to get away from that. So we really need to.
But add to, we have some pretty big things coming. And I think we've got holes in our code with the entry corridor. And I think with the knowledge that, the more knowledge that these commissioners have and us, it can only benefit. So that's why I'm asking about criteria. And when we're faced with future annexation and these entry corridor plans and housing and commercial, I'd love to know more of the criteria. And if value is all that's going, then maybe we need to have some future criteria eventually. Maybe a more clear process for people who do want, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So they, they cooperate in January?
So I talked to Larry and Leslie, who were planning commission members that were voted onto the council. I talked to them prior to the election and asked that if they were actually elected, they send me a letter of resignation so that I could appoint new commission members that were ready to go the first meeting in January, so there weren't two seats empty. So that's what's.
It would take only the first Tuesday, January.
Correct, that's correct. Okay. Moving along, partner reports. Amanda is excused tonight, it's her anniversary. So she asked to be excused and I honored that. She didn't have anything, if I remember, to report. So we'll go to Scott.
The park is done.
What?
We've just got to put up some, the shades. We didn't have to put them on, we're going to have to teach them how to do the pump first, then put them up and down. So we can take them up, put stuff in the water, so they don't stray by smelling. Everything's done, once we do that, then we're going to bring you the fence. And John, you can go and put on the slide.
I want to go.
I do too.
I'll see pictures. I will. My granddaughter can hardly wait.
She lives right next door.
Yes, that's true.
So other than that, that's all I have for right now. Just work on the CDBG grant. We work on a little bit for next spring.
I see they got the potholes down the south thing set up.
Yeah, they can try that out.
And we're trying to rope it through in the springtime.
Yes.
There's quite a few potholes in Second West. It's by the church.
Oh, that doesn't exist this year.
I know, I'm just saying, it's getting worse.
Second West isn't in Kansas this year.
Groundwork is getting better.
Second West by.
You mean First West?
First West, yep.
Oh, so by your house?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, now I understand.
No, by the Bible church.
Yeah, so by your house.
Well, that's down.
Yeah, right in front of Skinner's.
That's a bad section.
I drive it.
Hope this is making it worse.
I'll go fast.
There's some spots on First West by the church and by some choir that they have too. We'll address them most.
The name of the church?
Yeah.
There you go.
Good idea, sometimes.
Yeah, we step around.
There's curve and gutter. It doesn't really matter.
It's still himself. Okay, anything else for Scott? Trevor was excused tonight too, is on his way back from Oswey. Go to Brad, you're up.
So mine will be really short because we had an update on our system and it made it so I couldn't pull out individual calls. So I can tell you the amount. I had 56 calls since we last met. And I wasn't able to pull them apart because we were doing an update on that system. So that's all I can tell you tonight.
Can you tell Cassie thanks that she was up on this here in the morning to support our classroom on the grade school road?
I will. Yes, I will tell her. I'll let her know. Anything else?
Thanks, Brad.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Just as an opportunity, whenever you guys get a chance, don't forget to tell everybody what it stands for. We do a lot of stuff that is on, we handle a lot of things on a daily basis for, if you have the opportunity. Throw the pad on the backboard. Any other comments or questions before I?
Okay, so Daryl came to me and he asked me if we could, he was looking at the Princess float of yesterday's and was wondering if we could do a little one. He said that one's pretty watered out. Wondered if we could just rebuild it. He said we'd be, they've got time, so. It's the one for the Lions float, for the Princesses. So anyway, wondered if we could just renovate it. Make some big decision or we just take it from the Fiesta budget or whatever. But he said it makes the problem be the, or just to.
Well, I don't know that we have a Fiesta budget, so it's going to come out of general fund from the council. Like I think the Fiesta budget is almost, it's about broken.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I don't, so I think, the council can do that, it just, you just have to be okay with taking it out of general. So it's up to council.
Do we have a new float?
You'd need to know how much it was going to cost.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, Daryl will get that. I'll let him know just to get some numbers for that big quarter.
Yeah.
This, tomorrow night, the fire department's having a truth in taxation hearing. It's at 6:30 tomorrow night and they're talking about raising the, you probably all saw your property tax notices going from triple lot 23 to triple lot 86. But it's going to be point triple lot 6. So, and they have a good presentation there. Mayor, you spoke at the last Q and A session, it was back on the 27th. But I feel like many of us should be there because it is critical, it is critical to Canvas that we have good fire departments. So I know they're trying the best they can. So we've got a lot of numbers out there, but we don't need to.
I agree, thank you, David. That's important for sure.
I have one, so if you didn't hear, Canvas won 15 grand from the rap tax. And just wanted to follow up and see if we've got everything into the account for that. So we can use it for stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure we're. Yeah, I didn't, I, I'm sure we're.
Oh, one more thing, do you know if Trevor's made any progress with the food?
He sent an email to me that talked about uh. Let me see if I can pull it up, yes. Talking about um. There's two options, a purchase or a long-term rental of a. It's like um.
Construction offices, I think.
It was a construction office, but this is more of a, of a. More of a. Spoosh trailer theme that has heat and air conditioning and water to it, that just needs power connected. And they're about eight by four or something, I'm trying to find the email. Anyway, I'll mumble many stories forty foot more, so. He sent a, attached the pricing for a long-term rental and the purchase price. So um when he's back, we're gonna present this to the council. Purchase price for the storage container would be somewhere in seventy-five hundred, eighty-five hundred dollar range, the other option is a long-term rental. But I wanted him to present this when he's here. Um, I have talked to Amanda. Amanda would, would, that's, that's volunteer with that, she's the nurse at the school. And I talked to her Monday, yesterday about this. She's also pursuing some other options, she has some opportunities, so we're gonna continue to stay in contact, but the long-term rental is. Something like a hundred and eighty dollars a month for ever long, but. Purchase it for eighty-five hundred, maybe that's the better way to go, I don't know. He's gonna have some presentation, so he has. Some, some movement on that, but not enough presentation to the council this time.
What?
The wreaths across America, I was just gonna bring that up. Apparently. Ennis has been in hospital.
Yep.
And uh. Somehow my wife got involved in this deal.
Nice.
Even better, you're involved.
So now you're involved.
No. I think the wreaths are on order, there, there's some misconceptions, remember we talked about. We're gonna have a big wreath and flags and.
Yep.
Apparently wreaths across America doesn't know anything about these big wreaths.
All I know is Sharla Linford and her husband went to pick up twenty-six boxes of wreaths today and they have seven in the garage.
Right.
And Diane Atkinson and I sat down today and put together my presentation for the Marion Cemetery on Saturday.
So I don't know.
At one P M, at one P M, it'll be eleven A M in Francis and one P M in.
They're also doing that, yeah, they're giving just the May readings of the POA and the others, so.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, originally, the city was supposedly sponsoring. A big wreath and the flag stuff, and I don't know where that's.
So what, so what's happening is, the wreaths across America is the individual wreaths. But. Ennis had, um, it's my understanding, Ennis had, had organized. Because he didn't know how many individual wreaths would happen, he organized a way to put. Seven wreaths at the board that lists all of the. All of the deckers. One for each um branch of the military and one representing those POWs and MIA's. And that's what we donate, we bought one of those wreaths that will be posted at the board. And um I think he said he had donations from the last, if I remember right. So I don't know what part of that is wreaths across America, but um they do do those big wreaths because it's part of their um statement on their webpage. So I don't know what's.
All I know is that Shar said that they don't know anything about it. But. She, she kind of got my wife involved, she went back east for. Sixteen, three.
She's back today because I saw her post office.
Yeah, yeah, she's. If anything will be done, it will be done right because she's, she's a perfectionist.
So's Diane.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can give you an outline of the program if you're interested. Or you can just not worry about it.
You can just not worry about it. I just, I just, I just know there's been overwhelming support.
Yeah, there has.
People are excited.
There, um, I think they're planning on reading somewhere in the neighborhood, a hundred and fifty names for the Marion Cemetery.
Yeah.
Something like that. Pretty big deal.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Two, over, over, last year, in twenty twenty-two, over two, two point seven million. Wreaths over thirty, a little over thirty-two hundred cemeteries, so, but.
Francis will really put it because there are a lot of veterans there.
Yeah. So uh. Saturday, eleven and. One at Francis and Marion respectively, and then there will be an reading at the others. So thank you. I can give you the presentation if you want to give it.
No. Why would I wanna do that?
I, since you brought it up, I thought maybe you were campaigning for something.
No, I'm not campaigning for that.
Your wife's gonna be helping anyway.
Yeah.
Parkinson crime.
It's beautiful.
It's pretty neat, dude. Any else? Okay, we'll maintain a motion.
This is the last one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
She thinks that you would make that motion.
Yeah, always.
Look at how she can dance. Yeah.
John, are you working for Michigan? Working Friday? For your Christmas?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It's a conference, sir.
Conference, yeah, they're old names, yes.
He's down there last Saturday night.